Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the October 2025 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening. If you are joining us to speak on agenda or non-agenda items through our public portion, please use the signup sheets that are located directly in front of me. Ms. Lopez, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-6 et cetera. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 14th and January 16th, 2025. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and THIOS Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communications devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Please rise with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lopez, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley.
Here.
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delara.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Mr. Grania.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Clufel.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
And Ms. Fager.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Now that we are back in the session of school being in and all of our students being back, we're going to begin the evening with our recognitions. So I will turn the meeting over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez-Gomez.
Good evening. Welcome to the recognition portion of our meeting. This meeting is extra special as we will begin with recognizing our students, then move to recognizing members of our staff, and then close with a recognition from our friends of our friends at the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. I extend a warm welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, our administrators, faculty, community, students, and their special guests, their families. As is our model, we are excited to have our school leaders come up and take us on our journey regarding the students that will be being honored here today as Students of the Month for the past month of September. We will find out what motivates them, what their friends think of them, and even what their families think of this great accomplishment. These exceptional students embody the values of hard work, perseverance, and kindness. They set a powerful example for their peers and are a true source of pride and inspiration to their friends. Their achievements remind us all of what can be accomplished with effort and resilience, and they motivate us to strive for excellence each day. We are all so very proud of you and can't wait to hear about your academic and social accomplishments. We will begin with the Brant Principal, Mr. Bartlett, and he will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin, who will then follow this pattern and introduce the next presenters, Principals Dickerson, Sorofin, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School respectively, after which I will return for our staff recognitions. With that, I'd ask Principal Bartlett to come to the podium and get our moment going.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Rodriguez-Gomez. Good evening to all of our guests, Superintendent Dr. Johnson and members of our Board of Education. At this time, I would like to ask Hudson Lopez to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Hudson Lopez, the Brant School Student of the Month for September. Hudson was nominated by her fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Carlson. Ms. Carlson said, "I nominated Hudson for Student of the Month because right away she stood out as a class leader. She's an excellent role model for her classmates, always following directions in her own respectful way, reminding her classmates to do the same. She's also an excellent advocate for her needs. Anytime she's confused about a task or a topic, she'll raise her hand and ask for help. Instead of saying, 'I don't know what to do,' Hudson asks a clarifying question about one part of an assignment or topic, demonstrating to her teachers that she is thinking deeply about the work she is completing. She is well-liked by her peers, respectful to her teachers, and funny to all those who have the privilege of spending time with her. As principal, I always enjoy seeing Hudson's bright smile in the halls, as you can probably see her bright smile right now. It's a reflection of the positive energy she brings to our school each day. Even more inspiring is watching her succeed and persevere, especially when the going gets tough. Whether it's tackling a challenging assignment or navigating a new concept, Hudson faces every obstacle with determination and grace. Her resilience is just as impressive as her achievements, and it's been a joy to watch her grow. When she's not impressing us at school, Hudson enjoys spending her time crocheting and dancing, two hobbies that show her creativity and energy. She's also an athlete who loves playing basketball and softball, always ready to be part of a team and give it her all. When it comes to music, she enjoys listening to hip-hop and jazz, and her is her favorite artist. Did I say that right? I'm stuck in the 90s. That's how you say her. It's not H-E-R, it's her. All right, cool, thank you. Looking ahead, Hudson already has big dreams. She has her sights set on Harvard and hopes to become a doctor one day. With her strong work ethic and bright spirit, we know she's more than capable of making those dreams a reality. When told she would be recognized here tonight, Hudson said, "I feel really good about everything I've achieved in fourth grade so far." Well, keep your focus on fourth grade for now, Hudson, but I know we'll be hearing more and more about what you achieve each year as you learn and grow at school with us. Please join me in congratulating Hudson Lopez, our Brant Student of the Month for September. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium the Vice Principal of the Connor School, Mr. Jack Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. I'd like to invite Brandon Henry to join me at the podium. Brandon is a student in Ms. Hall's homeroom class who was shown exemplary character and tremendous effort during the first month of school. He entered Ms. Hall's third-grade classroom with enthusiasm and joy. Brandon is kind and welcoming to all the students in Room 208, making everyone feel included and supported. His warm heart and loving personality make our classroom a better place. Brandon's classmates shared just how much they appreciate him. His friend Elliot said, "He's very playful and kind." Josiah added, "He always helps me." And Abby, a new third grader at Connor, shared, "Brandon always includes everybody." All of Brandon's classmates had positive things to say. Brandon is someone who finds, who leads by example. During the first month of school, he was the first student in the class to earn a reward for reaching a goal in class dojo. He earned points for lending a helping hand to friends, following directions, staying on task, and working hard. His classmate Landon exclaimed, "His dojo points are growing wildly!" While Ms. Hall asked the class why they think Brandon earns so many dojo points, Elliot replied, "He's always the first one to listen and look at you when you are speaking." Brandon sets a wonderful example for his peers. He's often the first to follow directions and begin working on a task, and his effort is contagious. His friends notice and are inspired to follow his lead. Ms. Hall never overlooks his integrity and respect. Ms. Jones, the classroom power professional, added, "He works super hard and always uses his manners, saying 'thank you' all the time." When Brandon found out that he was Student of the Month, his first reaction was full of joy and surprise. He shared, "I feel amazing. This is the first time being Student of the Month." When Ms. Hall asked why he thought he was recognized, he said, "I do think I've been listening to directions and being a good friend." Brandon, you should be very proud of yourself. Brandon shared that his favorite book series is Dogman, and his favorite thing to do is hang out with his friends and play a fun game of tag. He explained that when he grows up, he wants to be a YouTuber. When Ms. Hall asked why, he said, "I want to be a YouTuber because I always see these fun YouTube videos about Roblox, and I always think in my head how I could do that one day." Brandon, your creativity, kindness, and joy will help you achieve whatever you set your mind to. We are so proud of you. So please join me in congratulating the Connors Elementary September Student of the Month, Brandon Henley. I would now like to introduce and bring up to the stage the Principal of Wallace Elementary School, Mr. Steve Dickerson.
Good evening, everyone. Kaia Wright, please come to the podium. It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Kaia Wright as a standout fifth-grade student at Wallace Elementary School, as our Student of the Month for September. Ms. Tagliari shared that Kaia's consistency consistently demonstrates an exceptional blend of academic dedication, social leadership, and personal ambition. Kaia is a student who is always on point, not just in her classwork, but in every classroom discussion. Whether the topic is a challenging math problem or a thought-provoking reading passage, Kaia is quick to contribute ideas and show deep thinking and genuine engagement. Kaia's academic strengths are matched by her positive attitude and inclusive spirit. She encourages her peers, listens respectfully, and leads by example, making her a true asset to the classroom. She's the kind of student who not only strives for personal excellence, but helps raise the bar for those around her. Outside of the classroom, Kaia is a well-rounded and driven young person. She is passionate about sports and actively participates in soccer, softball, basketball, and flag football, bringing the same determination and team spirit to the field as she does to the classroom. Her favorite subject is math, and she brings a confident, problem-solving mindset to every challenge she tackles. When she's not studying or playing sports, you might catch her singing along with her favorite artist, Olivia Rodrigo. But even with all these interests, Kaia already has a clear eye on the future. She dreams of becoming a professional athlete, and if that doesn't pan out, she has a strong backup plan, a future in engineering, a field she's already planning to pursue. Kaia embodies everything we strive to cultivate in our students at Wallace: curiosity, resilience, kindness, and ambition. She makes our school community stronger every day by being a leader, a role model, and a friend. A quote that perfectly captures Kaia's inspiring mindset and limitless drive: "Sky is the limit, so go beyond and out to space." Congratulations, Kaia. Wallace Elementary is proud of you. And now we'd like to introduce the Principal of Hoboken Middle School, Principal Sorofin.
Good evening, everyone. Please join me in welcoming Zamaya Saret to the podium as Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for September. Zamaya was nominated by Ms. Burke, who shared that since joining the eighth-grade team, she has consistently impressed by Zamaya's exceptional character, strong work ethic, and commitment to both personal growth and her classroom community. Ms. Burke describes her as a student who approaches every class with focus, determination, and a genuine desire to improve. She completes assignments thoughtfully and on time, participates actively in discussions, and welcomes feedback to help her grow academically. Ms. Burke adds that Zamaya's ability to advocate for herself in a respectful and mature manner truly stands out. In ELA, Ms. Nodine notes that Zamaya is consistently focused, motivated, and responsible. She demonstrates maturity, kindness, and collaboration in all that she does, bringing a positive energy that uplifts all those around her. In pre-AP world history, Mr. Schultz shares that Zamaya always gives her best effort, works exceptionally well with others, and exemplifies everything that makes Hoboken Middle School great. Behind the classroom, Zamaya is a dedicated member of the Hoboken Middle School Student Council. Ms. Falcone, who has known her since sixth grade, describes her as welcoming, thoughtful, and always willing to help with any task or event. Zamaya's friends echo these same sentiments. Her friend Nivea shared that Zamaya always knows how to make her laugh and brighten her day, describing her as hard-working, responsible, and deserving of this recognition. Scarlett added that Zamaya is a loyal and supportive friend, and that she's grateful that Mr. Timber seated them next to each other last year in math class. Both agree that her positive attitude, dedication, and sense of humor make her shine. What truly sets Zamaya apart is her positive impact that she has on everyone around her. She treats others with kindness and respect, leads by example, and brings a calm, steady presence to every space she's in. When Zamaya learned she was selected as Student of the Month, she was surprised and humbled, sharing that there are so many students at HMS who are smart, kind, and deserving of this recognition. So are you. Her favorite subject is math, and she's proud to be part of both the Student Council and the National Junior Honor Society. Outside of school, she enjoys spending time with family, friends, and she hopes to become a nurse one day. Zamaya is not only an outstanding student, but also a role model and one of our HMS Student Council speakers, who you'll have the pleasure of hearing from later this evening. Her leadership, maturity, and compassion make her an invaluable part of our school community, and I am incredibly proud to honor Zamaya Saret as Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for September. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Pica Pietra, the Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite Claire Schneider, Hoboken High School's September Student of the Month. When speaking with Claire on Friday, she was so excited. She has never won this award and is thrilled she was able to receive this honor before she leaves us in June. Claire exemplifies determination, responsibility, integrity in everything she does. A meticulous and dependable student, her dedication to excellence is evident both in and beyond the classroom. Claire continues to challenge herself in her senior year. She has taken on four AP classes in her schedule and is excelling in all of them. She boasts a GPA over 4.0 and still manages all her co-curricular activities. She is a true scholar-leader whose impact is felt across our school community. In addition to excelling academically, she takes an active leadership role in numerous organizations, including the National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, Classroom Without Walls, Heart of Hoboken, and the Agapi Christian Club. As student government president, Claire leads with the three F's of fair, firm, and friendly, earning the respect and trust and admiration of her peers and staff alike. Under her guidance, student government has become more organized, engaged, and impactful than ever before. Claire's commitment extends far beyond titles and accolades. She embodies compassion and humility in her everyday actions, whether volunteering her time to serve others, mentoring peers, or quietly helping someone in need. One memorable example of her character came when she encountered a classmate whose laundry machine had broken before a big soccer game. Without hesitation, Claire offered to wash his uniform for him. Acts like these capture who Claire is at her core: kind, selfless, and deeply empathetic. Her involvement in the Best Buddies Club, A&amp;A Tutoring Program, and over 100 hours of community service, which has earned her the prestigious Ambassador Award from Interview, reflect a sustained dedication to making a difference. Here's a little something I didn't know about our Claire here. I just learned she is musically talented, having recorded the Alive in Christ album with St. Peter and Paul Church, where she continues to sing in the choir and serve as a youth lecturer. Even with her demanding schedule, Claire maintains high honor roll status and demonstrates exceptional time management, balancing academics, leadership, athletics, and service with grace and professionalism. She's a four-year member of the varsity lacrosse team and the girls' basketball team manager, roles that highlight her teamwork, school spirit, and dedication to her peers. I asked Claire a few questions. Favorite experiences, of course she had more than one. Going on international trips, she's been to Ecuador, Iceland, and South Africa with our Classroom Without Walls, and I was lucky enough to be on two of those three trips with Claire, and I saw firsthand how she took advantage of these opportunities to her fullest. She loves being challenged in her AP classes, and senior citizen prom is one of her favorites. In her downtime, she loves to cook, watch movies, listen to music, and hang at the coffee shop. She describes herself as loud, fun, and outgoing, who enjoys spending time with her parents and her sister, along with Lila and Abby, her besties. Her dream is to follow in her parents' footsteps and head to Clemson after graduation, but she also has University of Georgia on her list. Claire, you are what I love about my job. You are a leader, compassionate, and committed to excellence. You are the picture of a high school red wing that has warmed my heart and those around you. I am so glad you were able to earn this award, as you are so deserving. Congratulations.
All right. As we pivot to staff recognition, I just want to quote Brandon Henry, who today said, and I asked him a question. I said, "Why are you being honored today?" And he said, "I'm being celebrated for my kindness." So thank you, and all of you who have been honored here today, thank you. This evening, it is my honor to recognize and celebrate 54 outstanding educators who have completed a very comprehensive journey of deep professional learning and personal commitment. This journey was made possible by the generous support of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. Over the course of the past year, last academic year, these teachers engaged in between 30 and 60 hours of Orton Gillingham Academy training and undertook a rigorous, year-long practicum under the guidance of the esteemed Dr. Pledja Fedora, Fellow of the Orton Gillingham Academy, who is joining us this evening. And I'm going to make her very uncomfortable as I ask her to stand and be recognized at this time. She won't forgive me for that, I know it. The teachers' persistence, passion, and professionalism have now earned them the distinction of becoming certified Orton Gillingham providers. This accomplishment is not simply a credential. It is a promise to our students, a promise that every child will have access to the kind of expert, research-based literacy instruction that can change the trajectory of their lives. In embracing this training, you have embraced the science of reading. You have embraced the challenge of transforming not only your own practice, but the futures of countless children who will learn to read, to thrive, and to dream under your guidance. Tonight, we do more than celebrate what you have achieved. We also look ahead to the powerful ripple effect your expertise will have across Hoboken public schools. As certified OG providers, you are building a foundation of literacy that will endure long after this moment. You are equipping our classrooms with tools that empower students. You are strengthening our schools as centers of learning, and you are shaping a district where every child's potential can be fully realized. On behalf of the HPEF, our Board of Education, and this entire community, I extend my deepest gratitude and warmest congratulations. It is with great pride that I will be presenting to each of you certificates of achievement, which will be a symbol of your hard work, your dedication, and the extraordinary future you are helping us to create. Now, I will be calling you up individually. Now, I would ask that you all be patient. There are about 50 folks that will be here. Some of them couldn't make it, but as I call you up, just come up, get your certificate, and then remain up here for a picture opportunity. I know you're ready for it. And with that, I will, and if you know that the person that I'm calling isn't here, or a small enough district that you can kind of share that with me, I'll keep moving. Are we ready to rock and roll? Good. All right. First, I would ask, we will begin with our associates-level folks, and they entered in, they engaged with 60 hours of training. First, I would ask Alexa Rocco to come up. No? We'll clap for her anyway. Allison Madlinger? That's fine, clap for her anyway. Allison Patron? Kristy Taylor? Thank you. Oh, I know she's here. Wait till you see her son. Denise Vallejo Rodriguez. Diana Rienzo? I don't think I saw her. Kelly Reagan? Regan? It's her married name. Kerry Keepers? Madeline Courtney? And now we are pivoting to the folks that engaged in the 30 hours. Alessandra Caratura? Andrea Mangione, she shared she wouldn't be here, but we clap for her anyway. Thank you. Ashley Reagan? Bevan O'Brien? Bridgette Goodwin? Bridget Goodwin. This just means that I'm going to their classrooms tomorrow to distribute, that's all. Carolyn Kirkie. Carolyn Martinez. I know she's here. Ms. Cassidy Hall, come on up. Ms. Cecily Evans. Christina Cocucci. Christina Galario. Christina Spadoro. Ms. Courtney Wag. Devon Carlson. Gwendolyn White, who shared she couldn't be here, but she deserves a round of applause. This gal is here, Ms. Jacqueline Cordero. Janice Sheridan, not here. Ms. Jasmine Johnson. Jennifer Streaser. Jessica Nodine. Kelly Saluzo. Laura Klipka, I know you're out there. Ms. Lauren Brunt, who couldn't be here this evening. Lori Natini. Madison Burke. Morgan McDonald. Nicole Schmidt. Polly Litz. Ms. Rose LaMere. Samantha Painter. We want to just clap really hard for this young man, although he's not here. He was the only man doing this big work, and that is young Shane Stanek. Let's clap for that one. Victoria Garcia. And last but never least, Ms. Victoria Inzatari. Congratulations to all. If you wouldn't mind, we're going to just take a very quick picture and then pivot to our next opportunity. Sandra? Sandra? Sandra. Dr. Fedora. in front of children for six hours while you give us that responsibility, so thank you, families. And at this time, I would ask Ms. Allison Strobel to come up for our Hoboken Public
Good evening, everyone. I'm Allison Strobel, Executive Director of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, here tonight with many of HPEF's Board of Directors. As most of you know, HPEF is a nonprofit whose mission is to enhance and enrich the education experience of every student across the district through private fundraising. I'm thrilled to share, we had another banner year, and will fund over a half a million dollars in new initiatives for the district in the 2025-2026 school year. This is thanks, this is thanks to the generous contributions and support of district parents, local businesses, corporate sponsors, and the whole Hoboken community. The Foundation's Board of Directors worked closely with Superintendent Johnson to identify innovative and impactful funding opportunities in a range of areas, including experiential learning and college and career preparation, financial literacy, including the brand-new Advanced Integrated Financial Literacy Lab, whose ribbon cutting was earlier today. We're also funding mental health and wellness initiatives, special needs programming, essentials technology, fine and performative arts, and literacy instruction. Two years ago alongside the district, we invested in Orton Gillingham's 30-hour teacher training. This year, we expanded on that investment by funding full Orton Gillingham certification, a 120-hour professional development training for 12 K-2 educators who will join those recognized tonight. At this time, I'd like to present Superintendent Johnson and Board of Ed President McGurk with To learn more about the Foundation and what we're funding this year, please visit our website and stay tuned for our annual report, which will be released later this month. Lastly, on behalf of the Foundation, I'd also like to take a moment to recognize some of our incredible board members for their service. As of last month, we welcome new leadership on the board, with Shana Wright as President and Julie Richman as Vice President. Both have already shown outstanding commitment, especially through the success of our annual community run, which they lead, and we're excited for all that's ahead under their direction. We also thank outgoing board member Amy Warschowski for her six years of service. Her thoughtful leadership and perspective will truly be missed. And finally, Jackie Dowd and Hannah Gordon are stepping down from their leadership roles as President and Vice President. Jackie co-founded HPEF in 2015 and has worn many hats since. Her vision, energy, and tireless work in fundraising and sponsorships especially have been central to HPEF's success and growth over the past decade. Hannah joined the board in 2016 and became Vice President in 2019. She's been a creative and committed leader, shaping some of our most beloved events: the Spring Gala, Mom's Night Out, and our online giving campaigns. Her steady leadership and dedication to building community have left a lasting mark on the organization. We're grateful that they'll both remain on the board this year, continuing to share their insight and experience with us. At this time, Hannah, I'm sorry, I'd like to invite you to receive a plaque in honor of your outstanding service and leadership.
Thank you so much to the HPEF, and I think just seeing all of our teachers up here this evening being recognized certainly speaks to the importance of the work that HPEF has done now for 10 years, and it's truly had an incredible impact on the school district. We will now hear from our student representatives from Hoboken Middle School and Hoboken High School. We'll start out with our Hoboken Middle School representatives, Zamaia Saret and Scarlett Verba. Ladies, you can join us at the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, members of the Hoboken Board of Education, and everyone joining us tonight. My name is Zamaia Saret, and I am an eighth-grade student at Hoboken Middle School.
My name is Scarlett Verba, and I am also an eighth-grade student at Hoboken Middle School. It's an honor to be here this evening to represent our school and share some highlights from September at Hoboken Middle School.
The start of 2025-2026 school year has been both exciting and busy, especially with our clubs and athletics programs in full swing. During the first week of school, HMS hosted its annual club fair during grade-level lunches. Students had the chance to explore all the clubs offered at HMS and meet with club representatives to learn more about their interests and how to get involved.
Our athletics program is also off to a great start. This fall, Hoboken Middle School is proud to offer tackle football, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, co-ed cross-country, and girls' volleyball. Our football team also holds a record of 3-1 forward to a strong and successful season, and our girls' soccer team stands at 2-2. We are looking forward to a strong and successful season for all of our student athletes.
We would also like to recognize our National Junior Honor Society members for their commitment to community service. So far this fall, members have organized a shoe drive for children in need, helped beautify a state park, and continue to tutor students at an elementary school. It's inspiring to see our students giving back and making a difference in both our school and greater Hoboken community.
This year, Hoboken Middle School has also expanded its after-school offerings through a partnership with Steamworks Studio. Students can now participate in Python coding every Monday and Wednesday. This beginner-friendly program introduces students to key coding concepts such as variables, loops, conditionals, functions, and events, while giving them the opportunity to create their own interactive games.
Looking ahead, HMS will host its second annual Showcase of Excellence on October 22nd from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., where we'll celebrate student achievements and projects from across the school. And to close out the month, our Student Council and PTO are teaming up to host our first-ever Halloween dance on October 30th. Thank you, Hoboken Board of Education, for allowing us the opportunity to speak before you tonight. We look forward to sharing more exciting updates with you next month.
Thank you so much, ladies. That was a great inaugural report, and we look forward to hearing more from you throughout the course of the year. We'll now go over to our Hoboken High School representative, Ms. Genesirio.
Good evening. My name is Genesirio, and I'm the Hoboken High School Student Government Representative, and thank you for having me today. For general events, the Student Activities Fair was held this Friday on September 19th during periods five and six. Students from all different grade levels represented the different clubs that we have to offer here at Hoboken High School. The Hoboken High School Homecoming pep rally was held on Friday, September 26th, followed by our annual homecoming the following night. The Red Wings won. The dance was a night in the clouds, and it was indeed cloudy. A great time was had by all. The Class of 2026 has been having a blast so far with our senior events, with Medieval Times being held on September 20th, and our trip to Stony Hills Farms this past weekend on October 11th. The Class of 2026 has also started a double-good virtual fundraiser from October 1st to October 5th, selling popcorn, helping to support senior trips, prom payments, and more. Class Council elections will be held on Friday, October 17th, monitored and chaired by our parliamentarian, Sofia Castiglione. Student Government Committee chairpersons have also been revealed for the 2025-2026 school year. I'll read them aloud. The Athletic Committee chairpersons are Christopher Munoz and Samantha Gotamer. The Fundraising Committee chairpersons are Eva Penn and Kylie Hawkins. The Philanthropic Committee chairpersons are Tasha Fu and me, Genesirio. For the School Spirit Committee chairpersons, there are Aria Khanna and Grayson Steer. And finally, the Welcoming Committee chairpersons are Lucas Daly and Arjun Samurai. Congratulations to all. The Student Government is also hosting its annual Field of Heroes celebration. The cost of a flag to honor a veteran is $5, and you can find more information about this on social media or through our district email. The Ninth Annual Powder Puff Flag Football Game between the seniors and the juniors has been postponed to November 19th. For clubs, Hoboken High School is celebrating Italian Heritage Month for the month of October through the Italian-American Club. A gift basket will be created and distributed later on within October. We are also celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month and the Hispanic Culture Club, holding events and documentaries for the student body. And finally, for sports, congratulations to our Red Wing football team for being undefeated so far this season. You can give a round of applause. The soccer teams and girls' tennis team are going deep into the county playoffs. Stay tuned. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and we look forward to seeing you at our future events. And as always, go Red Wings!
Thank you so much for that very informative report. It's always amazing to hear how many great things are happening at the high school and how well our teams are doing this fall. Very exciting. We are now going to shift to the business portion of our meeting. I know that some of you may have early bedtimes to get home to, so we'll take a brief two-minute break, so if people want to be able to scoot out easily, and if not, you're more than welcome to stay with us. All right, we are now returning. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
I do. I am going to keep it rather brief, so that I try not to repeat some of the things that were already reported out by our students. But I'd like to begin by extending my thanks and gratitude to our principals and vice-principals, teachers, support staff, custodial staff, and our security teams as well, and our PTO partners for helping us successfully roll out our back-to-school nights this year. The family turnout at each of the school's back-to-school nights were very strong, feedback was positive, and the evenings showcased our rigorous instruction and our curriculum, our student supports, and also our welcoming school climates. I'd also like to share a special appreciation to our technology and facilities teams as well for smooth logistics on the nights of our back-to-school nights. Today, we had the honor of doing a ribbon-cutting at Hoboken High School. It was really, for those of you who were there, I'm sure you agree, it was just a really heartwarming celebration of a new learning environment that has been created at Hoboken High School. It was made possible, the partnership between the Hoboken Public Education Foundation and Advanced Realty Investors. And as a result of their partnership and the financial contribution by Advanced Realty, we were able to open a new financial literacy lab, which boasts a Bloomberg terminal, a Bloomberg ticker, and all-new furniture, and it also boasts a number of new courses that we're actually offering. And some of those new courses have been made possible by the National Equity Lab, and Advanced Realty Investors are also covering the cost of enrollment in those dual collegiate and high school credit courses. This year, we are offering a course in business administration through the Wharton School of Business, and we're also offering a finance course through Cornell University. Both of those classes are taking place in the new lab. We are also offering a new elective course called Stock Market Essentials, and in that course, the students are able to earn their Bloomberg Market Concepts certification through that course. We're also offering our personal finance classes as well. It's really a great opportunity to help us achieve one of our goals, and that is to ensure that our students are financially and globally literate by the time they graduate from Hoboken High School. I'm also really proud to announce, and although we've done a press release and put this out already, I'd like to extend our congratulations to five Hoboken High School students who were awarded by the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. Semi-finalist Lucas Daly, we also have commended student Alexandra- Semi-finalist Lucas Daly, we also have commended students Alexandra, Alexander Kaluthros, Emily Critts, Hannah Morley, and Allison Chavez. The National Merit Scholars Program is extremely competitive, and we're really proud to have five students this year recognized. I'd like to give a special shout-out to two programs at Hoboken High School that I think you're going to be hearing a lot about this year. The first one is the Academic Success Center under the leadership of Kristin Baraloff, and the second is the Career Lab under the leadership of Jodi Benmire. Both programs are providing students and families with really meaningful opportunities for growth, support, and exploration. The Academic Support Center, which has now this year been renamed the Academic Success Center, is open throughout the school day. It's important, I think, over the last two years, people didn't realize that it was open all day long, but it is, and this year, there's more structured programs that are actually making the lab more accessible to more students. So based on teacher and guidance counselor referrals, students are actually scheduled for targeted academic support during the day. Students who attend the Academic Success Center do have their grades and their attendance and their homework monitored, all for the purpose of ensuring ongoing improvement and success. The Academic Success Center also runs a peer tutoring program which operates during periods five and six, which fosters collaboration among students and also provides leadership opportunities for our students as well. It also offers an after-school academic support program which is offered five days a week, and Hoboken High School teachers across multiple subject areas staff that center so that students with questions regarding homework or any kind of projects or tests can come into the center and receive support. Beginning in November, a Hoboken resident and retired Latin teacher by the name of Catherine Ventorini is going to be offering a lunch and Latin program every Tuesday and Thursday for 10 weeks, servicing approximately 15 to 20 students per block of courses, and we're really excited about that. We hope that it provides some additional literacy and verbal support across the board in assessments such as the PSATs, the SATs, and the ACTs as well. The district is also exploring a virtual tutoring platform right now that will provide both live and AI tutoring 24 hours a day along with test prep courses and parent workshops to strengthen home and school connections for all high school and Hoboken middle school students as well. So I'll provide you with some more information about that at our upcoming committee meetings. And kind of the partnering or sister lab to the Academic Success Center is our Career Lab at Hoboken High School. The Career Lab continues to expand hands-on opportunities to students at Hoboken High School through innovative industry partnerships, and right now, there's a few that we are engaging in. One is with Home Depot, and the other is with Eastern Millworks. We currently have over 80 students participating in industry-ready certificate programs in the Career Center right now, with numbers that are expected to grow throughout the school year as a result of ongoing outreach to students. And the students in the Career Lab are really taking advantage of a lot of opportunities, and one of them is the All-Stars Internship Program that we brought into Hoboken High School last year. But this program runs in two semesters, the first semester in the fall and early winter, and the second semester in the late winter and spring. It runs two days a week after school, and in the first semester is from October through December. We have a handful of students participating in that and are really enjoying their two-day-a-week program. Right now, they're still in the coursework phase of it, but they will actually be heading off to companies and different businesses to explore potential internships throughout this this program. Together, Ms. Baraloff and Ms. Benmire are launching also a student workshop series that will address essential topics such as interviewing skills, discovering learning styles, executive functioning, self-adversity, resume development, and college application writing. Those workshops are going to take place throughout the school year, and they're also in the process of creating parent workshops as well. So I look forward to being able to introduce those to the Board of Education and also to provide update for the public when they are released. And then, we also have a number of athletic updates, and I know the students had reported out some of them, but I wanted the Board of Education to take a minute and realize exactly how many students are participating in our after-school and extracurricular programs, but particularly in athletics. Our football team at the high school has 39 student athletes. They currently have a record of seven and oh. Girl soccer team is shattering a whole host of records right now. Their overall team record is 11, one and one, and there's 30 student athletes participating in that program. Our boys soccer program has 62 student athletes. I think it's the most that the soccer team has had in years. Their record is 11 wins, four losses. The girls tennis team just lost a heartbreaker in their tournament last week, but they're having a great season. They have a record of eight and three with 16 student athletes. I'm not sure if any of you remember just two years ago, when we started girls tennis, or three years ago, there were two girls on the team, and they just kind of started gathering their friends, saying, you know, "Join the tennis team," and, you know, we're up to 16 student athletes, and we have a very, very competitive girls tennis team in Hudson County. Our girls volleyball team is having a little bit of a slower start this year than it did last year, but the record's seven and nine, and there's 46 student athletes participating in girls volleyball. 20 student athletes are participating in cross country, 35 in cheerleading, 23 in dance, and 14 in esports. And then, if we take a look at the numbers that we have at the high school participating at the middle school level, those numbers are also really strong numbers. Our middle school football team has 21 student athletes participating. They have a record of three and one. It's really amazing. It's the first year that we've had tackle football at Hoboken Middle School, and their last game was amazing. They had a really strong win against Del Barton, and the kids had a great time. The girls soccer team at the middle school has 19 student athletes, and their record is two and two. Boys soccer has 17 student athletes, their record is two and two. Girls volleyball record is also two and two with 16 student athletes. And cross country, which is the one sport that typically you see lower numbers, at Hoboken Middle School, has 37 student athletes competing. So it's really nice to see so many kids that are getting out after school and participating in our sports programs. I'd also like to just thank the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. I know tonight, they provided us with or presented us with their contribution for this school year, but they really are steadfast partner. Everything that we come up with in terms of our ideas and our vision for educational programs, they work side-by-side with us to ensure that we have everything that we need and to, you know, support the school district's budget by providing funding to enhance some of our standardized programs. We have a few important upcoming dates and events that I just want to put out there. On Monday, October 20th, at 6 o'clock at Hoboken High School, we have the Mayoral Candidates' Forum. I want to make it really clear that this forum is being sponsored by our staff unions, our student government, as well as the Board of Education, but it really is an opportunity for our middle school and our high school student governments to see how the political process and the election process works up close and personal. They will actually be assisting the moderation of the forum, and we look forward to it being a positive learning experience for everyone. On October 22nd, we will be hosting our showcases of excellence at both the middle school and the high school, but that's also the day that we will have our elementary school parent-teacher conferences. And on October 25th, we will be hosting a Family Fun Night, which will be an evening movie at the Louis M. Tagliari Junior Stadium. Gates are going to open at 6:30 PM, and it's a featured showing of the original Ghostbusters, with popcorn, candy, and treats will be provided for everyone that attends. In closing, I'd also, since I've been thanking everyone, would like to also extend my thanks to the Board of Education. You know, your ongoing leadership to both myself and our administrative team and staff and our families is by far the most important thing and drives all of our work on a daily basis. So as we move through October, we remain focused on instructional excellence, student well-being, safety, and inclusive opportunities for every learner. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for that very thorough report. We'll now move into our committee reports. Ms. Lopez, do you have a business administrator's report this evening?
No report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. We will go to Ms. Norwood for curriculum.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee met on Friday, October 10th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, and myself. There are two curriculum items on the agenda, and the committee recommends both for approval. 9.01 is approval of a partnership between a Hoboken High School-based youth services program with Hudson County Credible Messengers Program, which connects high-risk youth with rooted community members with similar experiences. And 9.02 is the approval of a variety of field trips. Along the lines of what Dr. Johnson said in terms of excellence in teaching and making sure we teach to all learners, I'm, you know, very proud of all of the teachers that took advantage of the Orton Gillingham Training and Certification. These 54 teachers that took advantage of the Associate Level Educators Training. Add to that, almost 90 teachers have also taken the 30-hour MC Orton Gillingham Training, and there's another cohort, as mentioned earlier, of 14 teachers that are ongoing with their training and not quite certified yet, but will be shortly. So this really shows the district's commitment to excellence in teaching literacy to children who struggle with literacy, but really, all children. CTY math, we continue our partnership with the Johns Hopkins CTY Program. Professional Development was held in September 24th along with CTY classroom visits. There's been a number of fall baseline student assessments, including the Linkit Form A, which was administered in September, the DRA III was administered to students in K-3 starting in September 24th through October 14th. It's important to note that the state has changed the NJSLA to an adaptive test, and it's now being administered not in conjunction with Pearson anymore, but with a new state partnership with Cambium. This new adaptive test is being field-tested in November. There's a variety of schedules for different grades, and there's the new NJGPA Adaptive Test. That's the test for those enrolled in grade 11. PSAT testing is going to be offered October 28th for grades nine to 11. SAT prep is being provided by Kaplan, offered during that zero period before school, 7:15 to 8:00. And that will be ongoing until December 5th, ahead of the December 6th SAT administration. We've got 50 children, 50 students participating now, and another 50 anticipated to participate in that ahead of the spring SAT administration. There's been a number of different challenges and events that the students have been participating in, including the Steam Tank Challenge, which has been led by Supervisor Fernandez, training the variety of teachers in leading their students in the Steam Tank Challenge. The Congressional App Challenge, which is aimed at high school students, learning how to code and pursue careers in community science. National Biometrics Day, which has 45 high school students from Mr. Thomas's class in a partnership with Stevens Institute of Technology. Also significantly, night reads have started, and this is something we've discussed in previous meetings, where the children are no longer doing night writes, they're doing night reads and highlighting texts, filling out graphic organizers, and doing the writing in class under the supervision of a teacher. This has been seen by virtually all to be a very positive development, that the assignments in writing are done by hand on paper, and there's been a significant effort put into training the teachers in this new method. Parent Letter, if you haven't seen it, was also sent home and shared on Samore's. The district is going through its NJCUSAC process. All the content area supervisors are in the process of reviewing their curriculum, and we are ongoing with that with the state. There's been a number of efforts to increase performance of economically disadvantaged students. One is the Lunch and Latin Program that Dr. Johnson just mentioned, as well as the All-Stars Program in the Career Lab for job readiness and the National Equity Lab courses. So I won't repeat what she's reviewed there already. There is Hoboken Family Alliance All Schools Open House on October 17th, and that is at Hoboken Grace Community Church. The district will be participating. K-5 parent-teacher conferences will be October 22nd in the afternoon. Students have a 1:00 PM dismissal that day, and there'll be a number of things discussed with elementary parents that day, including all the baseline assessments and some feedback on their students' social-emotional learning. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. We'll now go over to Facilities with Mr. Granja.
Thank you. The Facilities Committee met on October 10th. In attendance were Mr. Lara, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Cluffell, and myself. A limited report tonight, so for the consent agenda, we have three items that were reviewed in committee. Hoboken Public Schools Second Annual Health and Wellness Event at Tax Stadium. Hoboken Family Alliance Special League Swimming Program at the HHS Swimming Pool, and the Hoboken Division of Recreation's Youth Recreational Basketball Program, that's at Wallace HMS and HSS. All three of these quests have been vetted by the administration and by the committee. We have the facilities at the requested times. We recommend these for approval. I have a few other just updates because these are things that maybe are going around that you might be hearing about. I'm sure most people have heard of the Wallace Gym air conditioning that failed the week before school opened. This has been looked at. Given that this equipment and this investment is now at about the 60-year mark, it is likely more effective to not replace, excuse me, to not patch, but to actually replace. We are evaluating contractors and equipment. The school community has been notified and status is actively managed at that level. The middle school elevator, which is currently not operating, was, the fault has been identified. A revisit is scheduled. It should be noted that we are not happy with the timeline on replacement, despite the fact that all parts are always a challenge to locate, and we are taking action accordingly. Capital projects, the middle school facade project, the exterior-interior mapping with drone survey has been completed. Bid documents have been prepared so that work can proceed. And lastly, this year, Demerest can't and won't host polling during school. Due to the gym use for PE and lunch, it is not possible for us to maintain both not disrupting the operation and the program of the school as well as the considerations of safety and security. Trailers will be made available for those who poll at Demerest. And we have other items that are going to be brought up later in this meeting, including the 38 Jackson Street lease, which we discussed and had no additional questions. And that is my report for October. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. We'll now go to Finance with Mr. Cluffell.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet last Friday on October 10th. With me were Mr. Granja, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Curry, and Ms. Lopez, and we, the committee did review all the agenda items and recommends all for approval. It's a pretty standard, short agenda. The only thing of notice Mr. Granja just sort of mentioned is the 11-11 is the lease agreement for the preschool space at 38 Jackson Street, which we've all reviewed. They expect to be approved. Little explanation on 11-10, which I Little explanation on 11-10, which I passed around to the board members over the weekend, is the Corrective Action Plan required by the Department of, New Jersey Department of Agriculture's Division of Food and Nutrition. There's a little extra cash reserve that we need to spend, and that money is being used to purchase kitchen equipment for Brandt Connors, Wallace, and Hoboken High School, as well as some furnishings and repair work in the Wallace cafeteria. And then I did want to add something else, just a little more, almost personal, no, but not personal. I think a couple of months ago in my report, I sort of went through, you know, the agenda items and mentioned, acknowledged the donation from the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, which was sort of celebrated tonight. And what I didn't say at that time is, that foundation, unlike the Gates Foundation or the MacArthur Foundation, basically starts with zero every year, and that donation of half a million dollars represents an awful lot of work by volunteers, spending a lot of time organizing a lot of events on behalf of the public school district. And I should have said it then, and I'm saying it tonight, and I wish they were here to hear that, but it's extraordinary what they do, and I think on behalf of the board and the administration, we will always be thankful. That's 10 years of an awful lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cluffel. We'll now go to Ms. Katamatory for Governance.
Thank you. Governance Committee met on Friday, October 10th, 2025. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Norwood, Ms. Angley, Mr. Cluffel, and myself. Committee discussed the agenda and recommends all agenda items for approval. This month's agenda is fairly typical of every month's agenda, containing a few resignations, a number of appointments, various rescissions of appointments, termination, approval of co-curricular advisors, among other things. But there are a few, just a few items this month worth highlighting. 10.07 through 10.10 covers the appointment of co-curricular advisors at each of our elementary schools and Hoboken Middle School for the current '25-'26 school year. 10.18 covers the HIB report for each of our schools, including one confirmed incident that has been investigated and is being addressed. 10.19 covers approval of each of our district's schools' self-assessments for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights District and School Grade Report for the '24-'25 school year. And at 10.21 is the approval of '20-25-'26 quantitative and qualitative administrative merit goals. And that is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. We'll now go to Ms. Delara for Wellness.
Thank you. The Committee met on October 10th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Cluffel, and myself. All of the items on my wellness minutes were covered in the Student Council Committee reports and Dr. Johnson's report, so I don't have anything else to report out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delara. I feel the same way about my president's report. It's the great thing about having such thorough reports from our student representatives. So I'm going to be very brief with my comments this evening. I think there's a very different energy to our meetings once we're back in the swing of the school year and our students return for their recognition. I think there's something really fulfilling about looking out and seeing families and friends getting ready to celebrate the accomplishments of our students, to get to hear from their principals and vice principals about their achievements, and it really, I don't know, changes the whole feel of this for me. And it's incredibly special when we get to see so many of our teachers in the audience being recognized for their commitment to literacy and professional development. This work is crucial to ensure that the students of Hoboken are well-prepared for the future. It is not easy work. It is often thankless work, but the work that they are doing with early literacy is so fundamental to the students of the Hoboken Public School District being productive members of society in the future. So I want to thank all of them, all of the teachers who've gone through this training, for taking that time, for their commitment to our students, and also, of course, thank the HPEF for their continued support of innovative programs. I was lucky enough to be at the ribbon-cutting ceremony this afternoon for the Advanced Integrated Financial Literacy Lab, which is wonderful and such an exciting opportunity for the students at Hoboken High School. As Dr. Johnson said earlier, it was made possible by a partnership between the HPEF and Advanced Realty Investors. These types of partnerships generously sponsored by area businesses are going to provide the students of Hoboken High School with enviable opportunities in unique learning environments. I walked out of there today, and I remember business classes in high school, and there was nothing like what is happening in this room at Hoboken High School. So there's a lot to be proud of. And finally, I wanted to say a big thank you to Jackie Dowd and Hannah Gordon for their commitment to serve on the Hoboken Public Education Foundation's leadership team for the last several years. We will miss them in their leadership roles, but we know that they will stay active and involved, and I want to thank them on behalf of the board for their commitment to the school district, the students, teachers, and staff. We appreciate your efforts, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. So with all that being said, we are going to transition over to public comments on agenda items. Do we have any speakers signed up? Vicki?
We do.
Wonderful. As a reminder, before public comments, over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board party to comments as such. However, just because the speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Vice President Angley will quietly motion when you have 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and the board members or the superintendent. Welcome, Ms. Versace.
Good evening. Roseanne Versace, Hoboken, Thomas G. Connors Elementary School. I'd like to start by congratulating all the students of the month, our national merit scholars, and all our student athletes. I have to share just a quick story. I've talked to a lot of people. I talked to my family and friends that went through the Hoboken public school system or didn't, and they are very amazed at the programs that the district is offering. It really is, it's so gratifying to me, and it's really, it makes me so proud to be able to tell them what the district is offering, I mean, what the high school is doing. So here we come, Hoboken, indeed. But I also would like to say how gratified I was that our teachers from the elementary and middle school were being honored this evening for their participation in the Orton Gillingham Program. So thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, SRG, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, for honoring them tonight. I just want to add that it's very, it's a proud moment for all of us and certainly the HEA to have our teachers recognized. It is an intense program, and one that I think they've, you know, accomplished with such grace. Many of them are parents, and they have children, and so to include all that with the usual work that you have to do as a teacher is really something special. So I'm very proud to represent them. We're very proud that they are part of the Hoboken Public School District. We have a whole group working in the program now, so thank you for recognizing them. I appreciate that on behalf of them, so thank you.
Do we have any other speakers signed up?
No.
So we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Lopez, please call the roll.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delator?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
And Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have any speakers signed up for comments on agenda items and non-agenda items?
We do not.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. So that will conclude our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and have a nice night.